Hiring, of course.
Can you?
Yeah.
Oh, this is a meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Police Commission. That's good because I don't have that.
This is our quarterly meeting.
Quarterly workshop.
Workshop.
Yep.
And could you guys pull the microphone forward because he's having... So he can hear you. Great. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for having us. We appreciate it. I hope this is echoed from you folks in this room, but we...
You need to pull that closer.
Yeah, you gotta almost eat your microphone.
Thanks. Myself, I should know this from my singing career. Myself walking around town and I've been hearing great things about the new offices. I hope everyone has the same. I didn't get to go to our latest Academy graduation. And you may or may not have heard that two of our people won awards. And more importantly to us, if someone has gone through the Academy is, one of our officers was actually chosen by his peers to lead them and give the department the Academy class speech, you know, which is a great honor. So that shows true leadership. And we're very excited to have the folks that we have. You know, the secret now is to keep them, right, to keep them long term. And that's not easy when you have, you know, pretty much every agency in the state and federal agencies, state police, looking for help, you know. So they're always, you know, seeing these folks on the road and ask them, hey, come work for us, you know, come give us a shot. So it's tough to keep those folks, but... And that's, you know, what's going on. I did talk to the chief yesterday about accreditation. We're still moving towards that. We're hoping, he's hoping shortly to be able to have a mock run, you know, with the powers to be to see how ready we are. You know, with Andy on the department, who's an accreditation manager like the chief. You know, they have a pretty good idea if they're ready or not. So I think it's good to go through a mock, you know, drill of the accreditation process. But obviously, we're in very good hands with that. And we're excited, you know, that when that comes to fruition, all that hard work. And other than that, I think, you know, I know we want to talk a little bit about communication dispatch. And I know, Paul, that something maybe you want to touch on. We'd be happy to, you know, give your, give our input in that if you want to start that process now. It's fine.
Done with your update on what's going on?
Yes.
Yeah, the chief came before this board about a month ago. And did a very nice job detailing the situation with the county. We have not had an official discussion with the county about the fact that we have a, I think it's $146,000 bill that gets paid up to the county for dispatch, you know, through our ability to collect taxes and pay them. And we were kind of waiting to get your sense. Let me back up. I think we left the conversation, and have always left the conversation with the chief and I think with this board, of saying, we just want to understand whether the formula that they use is appropriate for the, you know, given the fact that we virtually don't consume the service. And that's my selfish interest at this particular moment is to ask the county to say, well, you've got this formula, or you have some mechanism to send us a bill for 147, or send the taxpayer a bill. You want to, could you help us rethink that? Because it's 147,000 that we're not, we're not, or you're not consuming. I think you might have consumed a little of it. I mentioned a few weeks ago when you flash cut the console, right? You had to depend on them to do it. But that's really the ask. And I just want to get your sense as to whether you want to join with us and, you know, think about sending a letter up to the commissioners. I mean, not one of these hate you, you're bad people, you know, we want to do it. I just want to understand, is there any way we can get that formula rethought? And I believe that there's another entity out there. I'm looking at Jim. There's another entity out there that also has some, may have some questions about the formula. I believe that we and Conway are the other, the only two in the county that are, we have our own dispatch function, which, by the way, the chief gives accolades to, the fact that we have a great one. But the, you know, Conway, I think, I don't know if they understand, you know, how, what they're being charged, but, you know, the two of us probably will want to do something. So that's, you know, that, I just want to get your sense is do you want to join with us to do it? You want us to just write them a letter? You know, we'd have to vote on whether we do it without you. What's in your head?
Yeah. So what I would like to see is if we could get some information from the chief and from you that shows how much each town in the county pays. And is it based on population, number of calls that come in? If you have it just the service during the daytime or daytime, night, or whatever, however they work it, to see where we are with that. Because I agree with Paul. Maybe if we're just using it as a backup, that should be one fee. And if you're using it for night dispatch, that should be another fee. And if you're using it full time, that should be a third fee. Are we paying the same as if another town our size was using it all the time? And if that's the case, then it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, we went through this probably about 10 or 15 years ago. And we should pull that file. Because Moultonboro, Wolfboro, I think it that way. Conway went in and talked to the Sheriff's Department to try to change the formula. And we got nowhere. So we should look to see what we did before and then build on that.
And I think, I don't have the document with me. I didn't bring it. Shame on me. I think the chief did that. I think he did a little, you know, looking backwards on what was hap, happened in the past. But I, by the way, I agree with, you know, Brian. You know, where I see us sitting is we consume virtually nothing. We are, we are operating 99.999% of the time. And that's about the right metric on our own. That .001% is when we flipped over the console. We had to go down and up. So I have no idea. I've never asked, you know, Harold Parker as a commissioner. I've never asked anybody to explain the formula to me. And I'd just like to ask them, if you want to help us out and figure it out. They may come back and just simply say, as they did 10 years ago.
As they did, and we didn't use...
Good luck tilting at the windmill.
We didn't use any of the services then either.
Yeah.
But I think it may be a letter which laid out and give us kind of an outline to do this next one because we've pushed at it before.
Now, as a...
I think we should.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that.
As it relates to other, you know, towns on the county, so this would be Moultonboro, Tuftonboro, all these others. I don't know how we would go about, we could go about doing that. But I'd put the, I'd put that on the county. Say to the county, well, you charge us N number of dollars. How did you come up with, how do you come up with the amount of money you charge other cities or towns? I'd put it on them, not on us to go try to prove the, that's my point. I would ask them to explain it.
Yeah, that's where we would get the information.
Yeah, yeah, right. Okay. They have to figure out how to render a price to another entity, right? They have to Moultonboro or Freedom.
Is that information that we could get through John McDonald? Isn't he involved with the county? Like, I know he was...
John McDonald is a state representative and he presides over their budget.
Okay.
So we have a change of, we've had the change of leadership at the police department too. And we know that the old chief was very much into doing everything in-house. And he wanted the new console. He wanted to do all the dispatch. So when Chief Warren presented this to us, he presented it to us very neutrally.
Yeah.
He said, you can do what you want. You can go just nights with them. You can go full with them. You can stay the way we are. He goes, it doesn't matter to me. I'm going to make the department work.
Right.
No matter how you choose. He said, our option that we're doing now is the most expensive option. He said, if you want to save money, we can go to only days and nights go to them. Or we can go completely to, you know, using the county dispatch.
Not to say I disagree, but I didn't remember him saying that.
He was very neutral.
I would say what he did is he gave us the statistics of how many calls we had at those times. And that there's a time at night we have very few calls. And I think he was kind of pointing to the fact, is it worth it for the number of calls we have? Or should we use the sheriff? I think it's what he was saying.
The very expensive, I didn't hear the very expensive thing. I agree with what you observed, Linda. You know, he just laid it out as to what the calls are that's coming in.
Yep.
He did give us the numbers and he did show us that our current system is the most expensive.
And you have, you have his report. Yes?
I know. He emailed it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So the, my suspicion is that it's by population. Because that number that they give us, that's a pretty big number.
Yeah.
There's no way Tuftonboro is paying that number, right? So my guess is it's by population. So, you know, I mean, I'm, you know, we didn't even take a vote on it. But personally, I think it's something we can take a look at. You know, maybe after four o'clock, five o'clock, we switch over. I know there's towns in Rockingham County that still do it, even down there. That, you know, they just get on the radio and go, you know, Brentwood, Rock, you have the console. Done. And they take it from there. And, you know, the calls are switched and, you know, so just they're open during normal business hours for, you know, for the added luxury, I guess, of having people somewhere to walk in and talk to somebody, you know. But I've seen, you know, I went to Flora on an investigation like in '09. Massive agency. Building was huge. No dispatch. You hit a buzzer at the door and someone comes on a little radio box, says, can I help you? Yeah, we'll call a cruiser right off the road. There's no one, you know, and that was a little impersonal, you know. But I think so somewhere in the middle. Personally, like I said, as a taxpayer, I entertain it, you know, to do something like that. And there's, and my point is, there's no shortage of agencies we can reach out to and get their opinion. The ones that do it that way, the ones that say, oh, yeah, we do give it up at five o'clock. We do give it up on weekends, you know. And, you know, how is that working for you? Is there any negatives? And, you know, and go from there.
You can always do this too. Try it. If it doesn't work, you go back.
Yeah.
And we can't get from out, if we can't get from out, from underneath that amount, it's a way that we could save funds for the taxpayers.
Sure.
As long as they don't charge us any more for using it more often.
Yeah.
They obviously have some kind of formula. But I think that the statistics that the chief gave us is a good way to build from where we need, might want to cut.
Yeah, and I could see there's no way that they would budge. There's no way. Like the jail, right? We all pay, my guess is the jail is probably the same. That you pay by population, whether you use it or not.
I assume.
It's just, you know, one of those services.
That's my feeling. They aren't going to budge.
But like, yeah.
So if you go by the 147,000 or whatever.
I think that's the number.
Yeah, it's a big number.
That would be, I would assume, full-time dispatch through them. In other words, we wouldn't have a dispatch here. That would be their fee.
So the way that they built it out in the chief's report to us, based on the 2023 invoice to the town of Wolfboro, we were invoiced $3,306,000 on a total budget of $21,386,000. The county budget was $1,051,000. The chief calculated out based on the percentage rate that the town of Wolfboro pays 15.4% of the county's total appropriation.
So he came up with the number.
With that, bringing the 15.4% of the $1,051,000 for dispatch to $162,646 for dispatch services. I think the challenge with this is they're simply using a gross formula. And the town of Wolfboro and the town of Conway, the two biggest communities in the county, are not utilizing this service whatsoever. However, we're being assessed the greatest amount of money for the services that is really subsidizing the smaller communities. And, you know, I hate to say it, but everybody's downshifting. And this is an area I think we can argue with the county on. And potentially, at least we have to ask them to change the funding formula. That is, that's a substantial amount of money for nothing that we received.
At this moment, that's about where I am. I'm in a first things first mode on this. It says, could you just help us understand how you came up with the number, recognizing we don't use your service? And if the answer is, here's how we did it in tough luck, that could be an answer, right? Here's how we did it. And, you know, to what they said to you, bless your heart, a couple of years ago.
That's right.
Here's how we did it.
Yep.
There's the lake. You can go, okay, we can do that. But I just, I just want to make sure they understand that we are, you know, we all are. I'm not giving a speech here. It's a big nut of money, right? And it doesn't retire, you know, if you think about it, it doesn't retire our budgets. But it gives the person who has to write a check to us that we turn around and send to them, it gives them an opportunity to take a little breath. I don't know how much it would be on a tax bill. But it's enough. And Jim's right, you know, you gentlemen know this. We're getting, we're getting a lot of new stuff passed at us from up above, whether it be health insurance, whether it be all these things. They're coming at us in a big way. And meanwhile, back at the ranch, we're trying to figure out how to plow roads and pave streets. And it's, it's a, it's a bit of a twist. So I'm keen at the moment of just asking, how'd you come up with the number? Can you reconsider this, kind of getting it down towards zero? That would be my first ask. And then we have to take the, take the decision after that as to what the next steps are.
I would like also, as we did that, to take a look at what we would save if we got rid of the very late shift in the shift before evening, to see what the savings would be. So we have some data to talk about and to think about.
Now, one thing we, but one thing we haven't really done to a degree of confidence in the data is, you know, over the years, we have all, and with, you know, because you folks have been accommodating, we've used the 1444 number as a place for, I'm going to, to report a Siano bloom. To call in to find out why the lines are down on Pleasant Valley Road or, you know, to Barry's business, other parts of our town, you know. Not being disrespectful, the Wednesday Night Mass question. But, so we have that part of dispatch that some of us kind of think that it's okay to have that, you know, we use that. So, but we haven't quantified how much of that utilization is taking place. So we could do that fairly easily, which would add just more dimension to a future decision. That's all.
I think today with everything going on with technology, a lot of these announcements, for example, the big question is, when do the fireworks start? You know, where they held, when's the parade?
What time, yeah, what time does the parade start? That must be the biggest question you get all year long.
These are questions, but it's also to Paul's point. You get the, you know, you get a town-wide power outage and dispatch is inundated. But they can now do automated messages and keep the people apprised that way, which is good because then it's not taking away from manpower. It's not tying up your phone lines, hopefully, so that emergency calls can get in. Obviously, 911 needs to work. But there's a lot of factors in play here. But I, but I also agree that, you know, if we're paying a big chunk of money to the county for dispatch, then we have to revisit our dispatch center and see where we can potentially save. Because I think, and I'm addressing your point, Brian. I agree with what you said, the different fee structure. But I think, for example, if we went to just nights, if we just said, okay, we're going to push nights to the county, it's still going to be 162,000, whatever Jim just said, for dispatch services, unless we're able to negotiate a lower price for that because we're using it less. But then, of course, if you take away the nighttime dispatching, evening nighttime. So you're, we'll just say you're only doing daytime dispatching. And you've got personnel on that, that end, on our end, and those are salaries.
Yeah.
So, and trust me, I don't want to see anybody get cut. But that's where savings come in. Is if you, you know, you have to make some changes. That's what's going to happen.
Yeah.
But you at least have to take a look at it. That's, I think that's what Paul's saying is we know that. He, the chief laid it out to us again. Now it's time for us to look at it again and to have the figures and decide whether we want to or whether we do not want to and have a reason why we either do or don't.
Again, I, one thing I think we're all learning painfully is some of these issues, like this one, and other things that we're dealing with, and I'm sure you're dealing with more contemporaneously. The general public is, is not fully aware of the whole story. And we need to, if we're going to do anything here, we need to over-communicate what, how it works, how dispatch works. What is the basis of change, if there is to be any? And we need to just keep, you know, education, education, education. Because, you know, we can, we can just play off in our minds, you know, the narrative of whatever. And I just don't want us to go there because once, once that happens, you spend a whole bunch of your time doing, you know, disaster control. We need to just help people understand what we're doing constantly and why. Because at the end of the day, you know, their voices have to get heard. And they will get heard. That's all I have on the topic. I got to go check the lasagna.
So I've got a couple of questions here. So what do we get for the money? What do we get for the money on dispatch from the Sheriff's Department? Do we know?
Like, like right now?
Yeah.
They would take over for us if our equipment failed. But we reciprocate that, you know. If we can do the same for them, far as I know, if their equipment fails, we can take over, taking calls for them during an emergency. So it works both ways. To me, that's a wash. And so right now, really not, not getting anything.
We're not getting anything? So I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the 162,000 and new, new hires coming through. What could, what could 162,000 buy us for a new hire?
Yeah, cruises, equipment, everything. It's, it's...
So is that a new cruiser and a new person?
Yeah, it's a big, yeah. I mean, a couple cars, easy, you know, brand new, every year, which, you know. It's a big, it's a lot of money we could definitely use. And I guess it's a balance of how much convenience are we giving up? Jim, you know, when did we go to 911 totally? Like, when did people in a state where the calls go to Concord?
It had to be '94-ish.
E-911?
Yeah.
The 911 service?
Yeah.
Had to be around '94, I think.
Yeah.
25, 30 years ago.
Yeah. So I wonder how many people even know that, that when you call in an emergency, it goes to Concord, right?
Yeah.
And it comes back here. So that service is...
That's my exact point, is we need to educate people that you make a 911 call, it's either Manchester or Concord. You go to Concord and then they buzz back here.
Right.
And, and by the way, you know, with Linda's new Apple watch, I'm not an Apple, with my new watch, if I fall down, this thing is now going to dispatch resources to me, right? So there's a whole bunch of stuff out there that people need to understand. This just bypasses dispatch. That, by the way, that's why AT&amp;T and Verizon and T-Mobile want you guys to get into their FirstNet business. Because they wanted a dispatch, all right? So it's...
So I'm not, so I'm not done here. So calls per cost, 162,000 divided by how many calls that we, that dispatch in the Sheriff's Department?
Right.
What's the number?
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's an important number. We need to be able to provide that to the people and say, this is what we're paying for, 162,000. Yeah, the other thing that comes to my mind is, the state uses the Sheriff's Department. I didn't hear the chief talk about the state's cut and how much they were paying for the county also.
Maybe, I'm sorry if I dropped in late and if I'm out of bounds, tell me. If someone dials 911, it needs help here. Unless I'm wrong, I don't think I am. Carroll County Dispatch has, has no, no play in that at all. Comes right directly from Concord to here. They're out of it. So if you wanted to do a cost per call on that transaction, zero. There's no cost. To them, there's a cost to us because they have this 162,000.
So for the last two days, over the weekend, there were two drivers. One, 132 miles an hour. The other one, 152 miles an hour. State police brought that occupant to the Sheriff's Department over there in Ospey. And he was arraigned in Ospey. The other driver was 132 miles an hour. That was in Wolfboro. And that was, and they, and they, I don't, it didn't say where that person went to. But the reason that I'm asking about the 152 miles an hour driver is because they went to the Sheriff's Department. So obviously, you know, the towns are subsidizing the Sheriff's, the state police in order to run dispatch. And what's the state kicking in? I didn't hear the chief say what the state was kicking in to help divide that cost up and, and say, yeah, if we're paying 15.1%, there's six other towns. Is that what it is? Six other counties? Six towns per county?
Again, John, I may have the, I may have the issue incorrect. If somebody, if somebody gets arrested for driving at 150 miles an hour and no, nobody picked up the phone and called 911, even if they did, they would have been dispatched directly to the state police. And so Carroll County is out of that. Now, the fact that somebody went to the Sheriff's Department, you know, they put them in cuffs and brought them up to the Sheriff's Department, I hate to say it, comes out of a different budget, but it comes out of a different budget. I mean, the sheriff has a, has a statutory duty to hold, you know, people until they can be arraigned. Has, to me, it has nothing to do with dispatch.
Yeah, we pay for the jail too. That's a whole other line.
And so that's, so we get the program.
Well, that's kind of where I'm going. I'm going, I'm going to the program. It's like, if we back out, somebody, I mean, the program still has to continue. So we're, we're in the program.
Right. So dispatch, Sheriff's Department, jail, they're separate things, right?
Right.
It's my understanding there are all separate items within the budget, is my understanding.
That we pay for and probably at the same rate, I guess, same rate?
So it would be that 15.46% for Wolfboro of the budget for the jail, for dispatch, for any other function taking place, is my understanding.
So we're not just talking about the dispatch then. We're talking about everything.
Yeah, so yeah, times that, times three, that, you know, for what, yeah?
So for information purposes, there's 18 towns in Carroll County, correct?
Yeah.
Albany, Bar, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. So, and we're, and us and Conway are the largest population?
Yes, I think Moultonboro might have, don't quote me in this, but I think Moultonboro does put on dispatch during the day. I think they do.
Yes, they used to do it 24 hours. They were with us. And then they went to just days.
Do the rest of the towns use the county?
Oh, yeah.
So it's just us and Conway?
So we were relying on the county quite a bit before we did our public safety building over because in order for us to store a potential criminal, convict, or whatever, they had to go to the Sheriff's Department in order to be stored in the jail service. So that might be something that is, you know, a delayed effect. They knew we were using it then. They don't know we're not using it now.
Right. And there's other things you could do, you know, if, and that's something the chief would have to work on policies for that. If there's some kind of serious, like say, police emergency in town, they can call somebody in to relieve Carroll County of that burden. So see, there's a big police response needed for something at night. They could call somebody in, a dispatcher, and take over dispatch in Wolfboro during that emergency. That, that can happen. It does on the, on the fire end quite a bit. You know, when I was working, my dispatch, my dispatcher was 24/7, took in money every year from the smaller towns around us. And we dispatched for fire and rescue. But if they had a structured fire, a person would come in for that reason and sit down like in Deerfield and sit down at the desk and call Raymond and go, I have the console. And then we don't have that responsibility anymore.
So, so, you know, you can, for those people watching, you can see that this could go, this could go into an ever-expanding universe conversation about, you know, arresting bad people and the jail and all that. And first things first would be my, my advice to all of us. to all of us, dear folks at the county, could you help us understand how you have figured out how you want to send us a bill for 167, or whatever the right number is, and could you please, uh, help us understand how we can get that to zero?
I'd like, I'd like the second sentence, get it to zero, all that other stuff, but it's that.
Let's see if we can work together to get it to zip, now, I, I think the question for us and for you, and we're just more rhetorically, is, do we want to, do we want to write something up and have you all kind of, you know, or do you want us to just, off we go?
Yeah, and we have a meeting tomorrow night, I'll bring it up, yeah, and we'll vote on it, and I, I, yeah.
I would love to see a joint letter from the police commission and the select board.
That's why I asked them.
I think it carries more weight.
Yeah, absolutely, strength in numbers, I agree.
So I have a, I have one other question, um, we don't house people that are arrested overnight at our facility, do we? They all go to the county, don't they? Correct, okay.
Well, they're detained until they can get to the county.
Right, if, if it's serious enough that they are going to be kept overnight, they're going to the county, if they can be bailed, just held and then bailed, they go, yeah.
Yeah, process, the, the process, the process, photos, yeah.
Everything used to have to go to the county until we did the retrofit up there.
Yeah.
So what else is going on?
That's it, uh, you know, we, every time I seem, like I talked to the chief lately, we have an issue with something, and so mine, I look at, I go, wow, things are going great, if that's the only issue that you have, you know, them very minor issues, uh, so, and I've seen that go, go like this over the last, you know, 20 months, and it's pretty exciting, yeah, and it's, you know, what you envisioned naturally.
So you update, uh, and I, I get to see this, and many of us don't, you know, maybe don't get a chance to, so you update the, the public on recruitment, retention items, and, uh, so, you know, just a sneak peek on, um, how, how are you against total head count, how many people are coming out of the academy, how many people are, are going into the academy, where, where do you, where are you? Because I think folks out there kind of want to know, where are we?
So, we're pretty close to full staff, and, you know, that evolves daily, we have all these components now that we didn't have back in our day, where, you know, we have the physical standards, you have, you know, so even before officers get to the academy, they have to, you know, we have to know they can pass the run, we have to know they can pass, you know, all these things, so that, it, you know, it, you know, it, it's, so it's constantly evolving, it's not simple, like hiring someone to do something else, and it's complicated, uh, the, your background checks, and, you know, so, uh, but we're, we're really close, and, um-
And it's probably unreasonable, uh, to say that you can always be at full head count, I mean, structurally, that just doesn't work, people come and they go.
Well, that, that's true.
You're darn close to being, uh, at the level of, of, uh, operation where, you know, a, a one-person departure is not a, oh my, of course it is, but it's not an, oh my god, issue, is that fair to say?
Currently, to answer your question, we're down three, um, there's two with conditional offers right now, they're doing the backgrounds, and then I believe there's two more that they're putting through the motions, um, so that we'll have, maybe we'll have a waiting list, so we're, we're, you know, we could potentially buy the first of the year, or shortly thereafter, in January, be back to full strength.
And what is full strength?
Fourteen officers. That's inclusive of the chief, that's the chief on down fourteen.
Fourteen sworn officers.
Fourteen sworn officers, correct.
And then the two, the, uh, chief and the captain, that would make you at sixteen?
No, they're part of the sworn, sworn, fourteen total.
Okay, so, well, I'll deal with it later.
That's next.
Yes, I'll leave that, I'll, I'll push that over, I, of course, I'm kind of thinking things out, looking.
So how are, so how, how are your vehicles right now?
Not great, no, that's, that's a constant struggle, that seems like it's, it's, it's starting, I don't want to speak for him, but it seems, it's a subject matter comes up, it's weighing on him, you know, somewhat.
You have extra officers now to push them?
Yeah.
That, that, that was very thoughtful of you to say that, your extra, to push them around, that's good.
Just wanted to get that out to the public before we get into the budget, so they, I want, I want the people to know what's going on.
Yeah, well, we reduced the size of the fleet, and then also from that, there, there have been units pulled off the road because they're just not safe to be operating.
So how many do we pull off the road this year?
Three.
I know two, and one, there's one more that is questionable, but I know two, I believe it's two, yeah, and-
And that does impact, because, you know, like we, we've talked ad nauseam over the years about this, these cruisers not only see a lot of mileage in their lifespan, but more importantly, it's the engine hours, there's a lot of idling and a lot of things like that, I've always been hopeful that as these cars and trucks are manufactured, or these SUVs, that they're going to become more rust resistant, that always seems to be the death of a fire truck or a police cruiser, just because of the, the constant use, you know, they, um, they're in the road all the time, and then, you know, the, the smaller the fleet gets, the more each vehicle gets used, and the longevity of that particular vehicle, and ultimately all the vehicles is going to, going to go down.
My, my, my point of view is, it's always hard, um, when, and I don't know how to fix it, so here, here's one of these, I can't fix it, throw it in your direction, it's always hard to come forward with a, with an ask that says, I got 105,000 miles on a vehicle, and I got to replace it, it's, it's always hard, because some people go, they do 105,000 mile a year, commuting back and forth, the, you know, so, so they try to, you know, we all got to get better at explaining why the need, you know, I'm not saying we're, we just got to get better at that.
Your vehicles have hour meters in them too, correct?
No.
No.
Might not be a bad idea.
No, not cruisers, no, but, I mean, you can figure on an eight-hour shift, especially during the daytime, you could probably figure out that.
I think they can get it if, if they plug into diagnostic and take them, I think they can, they can get it then.
That's where they can get them, so, well, maybe it's built in, and that's the way I should say, but it's, it's on the computer system for them, and I've never seen you guys re, uh, retire one with less than 160,000 miles on it, or 150,000, and that's, that's hard miles.
But actually, on the newer vehicles, and I don't know what year Ford, but at least on mine, which is a 20, so a five-year-old vehicle, there is built-in engine hours, you just got to go to the OBD 2 port, hit the dashboard, and it'll tell you how many hours that thing's been turning over, yeah, that's not a bad idea, though, I'm just saying that the degree of difficulty, because we're always struggling with, oh my god, I mean, it's a, you know, the car's got 120,000, 115,000, and people go, why do, why do you need a new one, why can't you drive it to 300? I tried, and I mentioned this to, to Dave and to Jim, I tried to see someplace else, you know, a, a family member, an extended family member, drives a state cruiser, and every three years, like, just like clockwork, gets a new cruiser, and this, and I tried to find out if there was some policy, practice, whatever, and the only, the only, uh, thing that, uh, he couldn't find it and share it with me, the only thing is, you know, the, the central question is, do you want a cruiser or a vehicle that can engage in a high-speed pursuit, and then that's the, that's the delimeter for some of these things, right?
Do you have-
Go ahead.
Do you have a list of the repairs for each vehicle, and the cost, and is there a spot, I mean, Barry used to do that all the time, and saying, okay, here's your spot, and that would be part of every presentation on each vehicle, so you could see, now it's costing us this amount per year over the last couple of years to have it, and that's sometimes a good way for them to realize, not by the mileage, but by the amount of money we're having to put out.
And that should be in the budget, there's a fleet management detail sheet that has the age.
We don't have any of that stuff.
Maybe it's not in there yet, and maybe they're working on it, but typically, especially before we go to the budget committee, we'll have a list of all that stuff, so they can see all the cruisers, because, you know, for years, we've been on a one-in, one-out, so the oldest cruiser goes out, we get a new one in, just, and then keeping that rotation, it just kind of keeps everything moving in the right direction, but sometimes you get cruisers that, that, you know, it's cost prohibitive to keep it on the road.
And I'm not just talking to the budget committee, I'm thinking at the deliberative session, being able to show them, at this point, we're paying so much to keep a car that's so old.
So how far behind are we on the cruisers?
Um, we could use two right away, and hopefully, you know, you know, the ideal to get a couple this year, keep things moving forward, and, and another one the next year, and get back on that one, fully outfitted cruiser, and I can only answer this, because I just asked this question the other day, because I had somebody ask me specifically, what does it cost to purchase and equip a new cruiser? It was $67,000, give or take a few hundred either way, but by the time you purchase your vehicle, do all the outfitting with a cage, and all the special stuff that they do, the radio, siren lights, signage on it, it's roughly $67,000.
Another thing people don't-
How many, how many right now do you have?
Seven.
In, in use?
So spreadsheet, I put that up for you guys to look at, this was provided to me by the chief on Monday, um, as you can see, he's got three vehicles in the fleet that are well over 100,000 miles, he's got one that is going to be there very shortly, um-
You can see the engine hours too, which is good, at the mileage and the hours.
And he's got one that's been decommissioned, and I believe there's another one that's not terribly far behind that.
Another thing people don't realize is, the cars nowadays have computers in them, and they learn how to operate based on a driver, you take a, a police cruiser, and it's being passed among different drivers, and everybody drives it differently, it, it wears out the vehicle a lot more.
Yeah, you know, it, it always was standard practice, well, for years, you know, that, like the chief's car, would be one they take out of the, out of the patrol rotation, back when they had lower mileage on them, and now, when you're driving them up to 160, and they can't even pass inspection, you can't even pass them off to the chief, or the XO, or a detective, you know, so what a lot of agencies have been doing, and we have spoken to, to Chris about it numerous times, and it's something we need to look at, is, uh, a lot of chiefs in agencies, detective cars that buy in non-police vehicles, like off-lease Impalas, a regular Impala we would drive, with a warranty for a fraction of that 67,000, and you're getting a relatively new car, they can put lights in there, and you use, put a radio in there, and a detective can use it, the chief can use it, I mean, the chief doesn't need it because he has a Tesla, but that won't last forever, and, uh, so that's something we can do, instead of, you know, spending 67,000, um-
Administrative cars.
Yeah, I know the Raymond chief came up to do a background check on one of our people not long ago, over the summer, and he was showing me he had a Dodge Durango, and he goes, man, this, I think he said he paid 28,000 for it, it was a nice car, he, he said, I'm not going to justify spending 67 for me, I don't need it, you know, so we just bought this, to save that much money, quite a savings, you know, so that, that's something we're looking at, you know, to save money that way, but-
Good job.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, do we want to, um, make a motion that we write a letter in conjunction with the police commissioners in reference to dispatch? Somebody want to, I think that we ought to have it out of the meeting.
Isn't that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Paul, are you okay?
He's in the lasagna.
Lasagna, so David, we'll follow that up at our meetings tomorrow night, I'm sure that we echo that.
I just want to make sure that we're going to work with that, okay, any other questions at this point?
No.
Just keep in touch with us. Um, just to follow up, um, you're still planning a warrant article for five commissioners in 2026?
Yep.
Okay.
So again, we're, we're, last, with town council is working through that, and how, what process that needs to take place, in what order, you know, because we have the state legislation associated with the police commission, and how that has to work, so I did talk to, to John McDonald about it, and we thought we would go before the people here by vote first, by warrant article, oh, I'm sorry, the state would do it, and he thought, he goes, you know, I know how the legislate, legislators operate, if you can get a vote on that first, and, and then I would bring that to the legislature and say, hey, we need to file a bill, because this is what the voters in Wolfboro want, then it would be something we would do, but, but we do, as a, as a, as a board, we support that, yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, just one other, uh, point of clarification, I've had a couple conversations with the chief, um, it's my understanding that in the legislative actions that took place to create the Wolfboro Police Commission, uh, it outlines that you oversee sworn officers, and dispatch is not necessarily contemplated in that, um, have you talked with your council about if, when you file that action going forward with the legislature, if you should have them file that action as well to transition, so that it clearly defines that dispatch is under the police commission? Um, in my opinion, that's where it belongs, because of the spots turn, terminal, and the chief having to oversee and sign for it, um, but there's some question whether that should come under, um, town manager or police commission, and I believe it belongs under the police commission.
Yeah, uh, we have not visited that with town council, but we, we can work on that tomorrow night, get that done ASAP.
I think it'd be, yeah, it, it would clean up a messy area.
It'd tidy things up.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to set a date for like, three months from now for the next one, instead of waiting until then to try to coordinate a date, or, or that work?
That'd be great, you want us to do it right now?
Yeah, we still got a few minutes, mate.
Okay, so it would be, um-
February, maybe after the first of the year.
First of Jan, the first Wednesday in January.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, that way you can discuss the articles.
About January 7?
Correct, that would be more-
We have a select board meeting that night, but we could, uh-
Come early.
Come early, 4 o'clock?
Four, that's too early.
Well, you can come when you're ready.
You can come when, there you go, there you go, you can come when you're ready.
If we only, if we only needed hours, and then 4:30?
When we get closer, how about we kind of take a look at where we are in warrant articles, and decide at that point?
So we'll tentatively leave Pennsylvania in PC meeting.
Do you want to do 4:30 on the 7th, or 5?
Sure, 4:30 on the-
4:30 on the 7th, okay.
I got Steve, the, the modicum of, of accommodation, 4:30, all right.
That won't be here.
On my calendar.
Are we done?
I'm, I make a motion that we recess for about 10 to 15 minutes.
Second.
Okay, sounds good.
Sounds great.
All those in favor?
All right, I, I-